Welcome to the May 8, 2017, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. Stand with us, please Commissioner Craig Lynch will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Craig.
Welcome. We thank you this day. It was beautiful day to be here with you and no confusion files. Thank you for all of your glory. We pray that you use all the relationships for your glory. We thank you all for the light and sunshine and all of us here. Craig, did you just be with us tonight in this meeting? God is a love of liberation to be proud of everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call or roll, please, Gail.
Ronde Allen.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Lee Bogel.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Bill Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Craig Lynch.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Mike Vought. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Have a quorum.
Thank you, Gail. We have no minutes to approve, no items withdrawn or deferred. Item six on our agenda under new business request for site plan approval. The item number is seventeen dash three zero one five Kenny Pipe &amp; Supply. New construction of approximately one hundred and four thousand two hundred and seventy-five square feet of light industrial space on ten point seven acres zoned light industrial located along Butler Road. Kenny Pipe &amp; Supply, Inc. is the applicant. Might introduce some of you to Danielle who's not real familiar with seeing her up here. Danielle is filling in for Doug who is in New York doing some training. I'm not so sure that I'd send anybody to New York for training, but that's another story, I guess. But Danielle, welcome aboard and the floor is yours.
Well, this item was originally scheduled for April twenty-fourth but was removed from that agenda because of the outgoing comments that remain for the one hundred and four thousand two hundred and seventy-five square foot building. Since then, the applicant has sent in revised plans and staff has reviewed those plans and provided the applicant with additional comments for which the applicant, from what I understand, has addressed the majority of them. Mike?
Yes. We have received updated construction plans for the site plan and we had several comments originally, but they've addressed the majority of them. Mainly it was the excess of the, of the, let's see, maximum coverage of the impervious area. They've reduced the size of the building and, and the parking area and got that to meet the zoning requirements. They've updated the buffering requirements. We've got most of the comments addressed and we think that the plan's in, in good order.
Do I have a recommendation?
We recommend approval with the applicant.
Subject to staff comments, yes.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner?
To be a little more clear, this is Joe B. Jackson, twenty-four. This is Butler Drive down here. This is Glorious Wonders Daycare, if you know where that is. And this is, let me turn the zoning off. This is City Murfreesboro right here and the rest of this is out in Rutherford County. They're wanting to establish their new site on this parcel right here. And it's already zoned light industrial. The size of the building is one hundred and four thousand two hundred and seventy-five square feet. They've got four truck docks, outside gravel storage area, parking up front for employees. It'll be a conventional septic system and then they'll have a sprinkled, it'll be sprinkled and with a new hydrant up front here. Yes, sir. There's a few that we'll have to address. We're still working with them, but they, they've met most of our requirements and we won't have a, a pre-construction meeting and let them start until they've addressed all the remaining comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve item seventeen dash three zero one five Kenny Pipe &amp; Supply. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion to approve carries. Thank you. Six B, items that are scheduled for rezoning request or other public hearings. Six B one, item seventeen dash A zero one two, Benchmark Communities. Location is Shelbyville Pike. Commission District is Sixth. County Commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately one hundred and fourteen acres. Tax map one thirty-six, parcels sixty-nine point oh one and seventy-five point zero zero. Existing zoning is a PUD, Planned Unit Development. Proposed zoning is PUD amendment for a single-family area revision. Danielle?
Thank you. This is a revision of the original PUD that was revised in two thousand and thirteen, but the original planned residential development had approved the site, which consists of over two hundred acres, for three hundred and fifty-three single-family homes, one hundred and thirty-two town home dwellings, and ten commercial lots. And this was back in two thousand and seven. In two thousand and thirteen, the property transferred and an amendment to Davenport Station was submitted to remove the ninety-two town home units and replace them with single-family units. Now, the current owner is now proposing to adjust the southern portion of the property to increase room for preserved soils for the step system. And this will reduce the modified number of four hundred and forty-eight single-family units to four hundred and thirty-six. It represents a decrease of twelve lots from the amendment in two thousand and thirteen. The minimum lot sizes will be fifty-five hundred square feet and house sizes would be a minimum of seventeen hundred square feet. There will be a thirty-five percent minimum construction of brick, stone, or cement board siding and/or mason product. And the pattern book will provide more, has provided more details on the construction. We do find that most of the development is similar to what was originally approved in two thousand and thirteen and the road layout has changed and the number of lots is decreasing by twelve, but we do not foresee any additional impacts to the surrounding area. At the April tenth, two thousand and seventeen hearing, there were comments regarding the traffic and the applicant has submitted an updated traffic study and it has been reviewed by staff. Mike, do you have any comments?
The, let me see if I can find the master plan of the development. I don't think I have it on these.
It's in that folder.
Is it on there?
It's in the folder.
Oh, the folder, okay, okay. Let's see. Not the commercial, okay. All right, we're getting there, I'm sorry. All right. They've adjusted their traffic study, re-looked at it again, and what they've concluded based on the current traffic patterns on two thirty-one and the projected traffic load for Davenport Station, they are recommending a deceleration right turn lane coming into, which will be Davenport Drive. This is section one that they're working on. They'll continue to have the, the left turn lane going north on two thirty-one and be able to turn into here. Likewise, on the Rucker Road Extension, they'll have a deceleration lane with a hundred feet of, of storage, turning right into Rucker, and then also the left turn lane with a hundred feet of storage going into Rucker. In addition, when it's warranted, they'll have a traffic signal at this intersection. The study said at the current time, the numbers don't justify putting in a turn lane here on Oak Meadow because this is commercial. Once a site plan comes in, we know exactly what's coming in, the, and the traffic load that it will have. They'll reevaluate this intersection as well as when they bring this other section in of Davenport Station. But right now, they, they've adjusted their, their traffic study to add a deceleration right turn lane in here, here, and then they'll continue to have the left turn lane here and here, but nothing right now for this one.
Mike, what about in the mornings when they're stacking up to take kids? Well, I don't know which way they'd be going. Well, they'd be going to work, be going north, but they'd probably be taking kids south. Will they need an acceleration lane going north on two thirty-one when it, when they're stacking up coming out of the, the, those two roads?
Well, they'll, they'll have, they're proposing a right and left turn lane out of here and a right and left coming out of the development here as well. Is that what you're asking?
No, no. When they cross over and going back toward Murfreesboro.
Oh, oh, I see.
Morning time when they're stacking up and trying to get out and they'll be jockeying for.
Are you talking about an acceleration lane here?
Yeah, they'll be jockeying for position. In fact, they'll even be going up there, probably using the, the road by empty bottle to get ahead of the neighbor, get ahead of the neighbor.
Right. Well, they, that wasn't addressed in the, the movement. I assume that once this signal is, is installed, most people will use the signal to turn north, have braking traffic. But no, they didn't address acceleration lanes. We don't see a whole lot of those, and I'm, I'm not sure if the state is, is keen on those or not. That's something we'd have to work out with the state.
Okay, back to the light.
Yes, sir.
They're gonna be doing the northern portion first.
Yes, sir. It's this section right here.
Yeah, okay. When, when they start spilling over southward right there, who's gonna determine that light? You?
Right. Once, we'll keep an, keep an eye on the, the level of development and we'll work with the state as well. They have certain criteria that they have to meet. The state was waiting on this revised traffic study before they allow the connection, any work to be done inside of two thirty-one's right away. So right now, they're just working inside the property and don't have a T-DOT permit. So we're working closely with, with T-DOT to make sure that it, it meets their standards, our standards.
As rapidly as possible, the light will come into play.
Yes, sir. Right. We'll keep an eye on that, yes, sir. With each, each new development, depends on the timing of it and the, the number of lots, we'll ask for an update in the traffic study.
Do you want to take them through the photos of the site and we posted the sign?
Okay.
Good, good question. Who's paying here, Mike, on the light?
I'm sorry?
Who's paying for the light?
It will be the developer.
Hundred percent.
Yes, sir.
Mike, I have a question on this. Am I understanding correctly that this PUD has previously been approved with some highway So if they don't take this reduction of twelve lots, then they don't have to do any other improvements to the highway?
No, they still have to work through the, the state. The state was wanting this updated traffic studies as well as us. So to get a connection into the state right away, they have to, you know, have the state review.
Their connection was not approved prior to this.
No, sir. They're just working on their property at their own peril if they don't get a, you know, the, everything worked out with the state. It just, it's on hold until they get that.
They've, again, they received a notice to proceed or for section one in January of this year and they have commenced site work, just like Mike indicated.
Right. Just outside the, the state's right away. And here's, here's a few photographs. I don't want to steal your thunder, but.
Oh, no, please. Please do. No, these are just photos of the site and the surrounding area. These are the photos of the site where they're beginning construction. Posted a sign on the property and then you see the four lane divided highway and the surrounding land uses.
Mike or Danielle, one. What, what about this letter?
That's for the last item on our agenda, the, or item B three. Just up the road a little bit, though.
Danielle, could you summarize for us again before we conduct our public hearing, why this item is on the agenda? What revisions they're proposing to make?
They are proposing to modify some of the minimum lot sizes to fifty-five hundred square feet and house sizes will have a minimum of seventeen hundred square feet. They are reducing the number of lots from four hundred and forty-eight to four hundred and thirty-six, single-family residential detached spaces. They're increasing open space and increasing the amount of reserved soils in the step systems.
Mike, I remember last time we talked about this, traffic was the biggest issue, it seemed like, coming up. It's not on my iPad. I have a, I guess the one that says, the pattern book says that they will conduct a traffic study. So I know you said that's been done. Is it significant at all that the turn lanes are not shown on the master plan on the pattern book? Because I thought they were, and it may just be that you're following it and it may be that it's in the minutes or somewhere else, but I just want to make sure any turn lanes are reflected in the pattern book.
We can ask them to update it, but I don't know if they can see much of it on here, but we could have, ask them to update the, the pattern book to reflect the, the need for turn lanes.
Ready for our public hearing? This time I'll declare a public hearing open for item seventeen dash A zero one two, Benchmark Communities. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Evening. Rob Ulch and SCC on behalf of Benchmark Communities. Just kind of give you, more or less, Mike's giving you guys an update in the traffic impact study that was requested at the last meeting. We are in agreement with, fully with the recommendations of the traffic engineer in regards to all the improvements that are necessary for our development to move forward and to make it as safe as possible for the residents in the area and the residents that will be moving into Davenport Station. So I think, you know, we've come to, you know, all the conclusions that she's based, we're improving those. We were actually on the phone today with Mike in regards to section one. We didn't have a deceleration lane included. We're now drawing that up right now to be an amendment to section one to get that lane in based on what the traffic impact study. So the first section development's already been approved. We're working with Mike to make an adjustment to those plans so we can get that lane in there, get it in front of T-DOT and get T-DOT to improve that improvement as well. And then, of course, all the other improvements that are listed in the recommendations on page twenty-eight, those will be followed as well as we go through the future sections of development. So, you know, I'm definitely available for any questions now or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Carter Woodruff, joining landowner to the south of the property. I think without reiterating a whole lot of things, my main concerns were about traffic appears that they're being addressed. I am concerned about that north traffic and traffic coming out in from Oak Meadow, but assuming that things can be addressed along that line. I continue to have a concern about the size of lots that are in this, fifty-five hundred square foot lots. The issues are pretty substantive at times in this discussion about what problems those bring. I know there's advantages from the development side, but there's some problems from the, not just aesthetic side, but, you know, traffic flow, things of that nature. And then I am concerned, but Mike has addressed that they will be looking at the drainage from.
Yes, I talked to them again today. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
I talked to them again today about the drainage going to your property and they do have a plan for that.
Pretty good elevation difference over there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one rising, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Well, I got things about this after the meeting last month, or last time, whenever it was, and I got a whole different perspective. They've got, the way it is approved now, four hundred and forty-eight lots that are basically the same price point of house. The market will dictate how fast that subdivision is built out, whether it be five years or ten years or whatever. But if we approve this, we're giving them a second price point of houses, which will accelerate their sales ability and will put the extra crowding on the schools and the roads and all in half the time. So that is something to be considered because, you know, they, they took out the town homes, which was a second price point of houses, but that was been removed. But at this point in time, we're looking at a very extended period of time to absorb four hundred and forty-eight neighbors or people or, or children in the schools and all and stuff. So if we do this, that number will be brought down to whatever, half or potentially or something like that. So that's the concern I've got besides the fifty-five hundred foot lots being extremely small, but this accelerates our demand on all our infrastructure. Because if it takes ten years, we kind of live with that. If it takes five years, then the school's gotta be increased in size that much quicker. And I didn't think of that aspect of it till after we left the meeting last month, but that's a, that's a whole nother problem, in my opinion.
No. On, I guess I have to look at the other side that, to that also. According to this, their plan, they're looking for one point nine four lots per acre. I suppose if we left at R fifteen, theoretically, you could have about two and a quarter lots per acre, so you're looking at a lower density, lower total use of this land that is possible. Now, I understand there's step systems and other, you know, technical soil sites and that sort of thing that may come into play, but I think under two lots per acre is, is a pretty low-density neighborhood. Maybe it is accelerated, but that's, I, I don't know, the school system is, falls under our purview completely, though.
Questions and need a motion?
I have a question. Do we have lots this small anywhere else in the county? I don't remember approving anything with lots this small before.
Alhavin, probably.
Alhavin has it?
Once at McCann Estates, we did.
They're still in process, probably, I guess.
I was thinking they're larger than that, though.
I thought they were fifty-five hundred foot on that. But maybe not. They're pretty small.
Alhavin might not be that small, or are they that small? Yeah, they are that small. Okay. And that's on Ocal on Amerville, just north of eight forty.
Mr. Chair, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of excitement out there, so I'm gonna throw out there a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item seventeen dash A zero one two for Benchmark Communities. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Opposition?
No.
Motion carries. I'm gonna take that back. Call or roll, please, Gail. Maybe the ayes were a little bit louder than the nays, so call or roll.
Jim Aberwater?
Yes.
Lee Bogel?
Yes.
David Jones?
Yes.
Bill Jordan?
No.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Craig Lynch?
Yes.
Chip Pinion?
No.
Charlotte P. Yes. Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. Zoning requests, item six B two, seventeen dash A zero one three. This is also for Benchmark Communities. Location Shelbyville Pike, Commission District Six. County Commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately twenty-five acres. Tax map one thirty-six, parcel sixty-nine point oh one, sixty-nine point oh seven, sixty-nine point oh nine, and seven five point zero zero. Existing zoning is RM with a previously approved conditional use permit for a planned development. Proposed zoning is commercial general. Danielle?
Thank you. This is a request for Davenport Station that we just discussed before, but it only involves twenty-five acres of the two hundred and ten acres. And as you will see in the graphic that we have posted, it affects these lots that were originally intended to be non-residential. And when they were originally approved in two thousand and seven, it was decided, and Doug has included the minutes from that meeting, that specific uses would not be identified, that as each lot was developed, it would come before the planning commission so that citizens could voice their concerns. So there is a slight error in our advertisement, however, it doesn't affect our ability to process this request tonight. They are seeking to change nine acres of the twenty-five acres is already zoned commercial services and it's this portion that's identified as A on the map. So we're already considering a parcel that's commercial services. And then the other portions are residential medium with a previously approved conditional use permit. And they are the ones that Mike is just highlighting here for you. They are seeking to rezone all of these properties to commercial general. And this is, this allows them, and at the recommendation of staff, a list of permitted uses that they can work with rather than process. The zoning system that was in place when it was originally approved does not exist anymore. We have a list of permitted uses under each traditional zoning district. And so if you will see in your packets, Doug has included a table that will show you the comparison between commercial services and commercial general. Commercial general is our most intensive commercial district. However, if you look at the list, there are only a few differences between commercial services and commercial general. And the applicant would just like the opportunity to have a little more certainty with how these properties can be developed since they have already been approved as non-residential lots. And, Mike, did you have any?
Questions, Commissioners?
uses that they can work with, rather than process. The zoning system that was in place when it was originally approved does not exist anymore. We have a list of permitted uses under each traditional zoning district. And so if you will see in your packets, Doug has included a table that will show you the comparison between commercial services and commercial general. Commercial general is our most intensive commercial district, however, if you look at the list, there are only a few differences between commercial services and commercial general. And the applicant would just like the opportunity to have a little more certainty with how these properties can be developed, since they have already been approved as non-residential lots. And Mike, did you have any?
While you're reviewing that list, we'll go ahead and conduct our public hearing. This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item 17-A013 for Benchmark Communities for a proposed zoning of commercial general. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
On the property north, right here. North of Benchmark, where they're gonna put the A, what you've got, commercial general?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Edgar.
Oh, you're Edgar, okay.
Yeah. The property north of your Benchmark on A, I have an ingress road, it's 13-foot, and people out there think that they can use that road going out to 231 as a thoroughfare. The line does not run adjacent to the property. Now, that'd be something I would consider if you built a general business back there, you'd have to use the Meadow, you know, Oak Lane back here, come out to 231. What I'm worried about is that being taken as, because traffic can go through there like one or two of us in the neighborhood, but if you have someone out there with a business, they might start bringing tractor-trailers through there on my property without, you know, actual, you know, public use. So I'm concerned about that. Wanted to just clarify that before anything took place. My property's been there, I've had it for about the last 20 years, and Benchmark, I didn't know that they had general, well, general, commercial use already. And because it don't perk, you know, they had to run that perk site back over to the housing perk site on the backside of the property. Okay? So have any questions, Commissioners? I'm on the Joe Frank Jernigan's office, if you want to know who I am, so. Ask anyone have any questions about what I'm trying to bring forth here at the public hearing? Okay. Yeah, I understand what I'm looking at there.
So you are concerned about people using your property as access to going up by the, yeah, by the... Unless they have an easement, they would not be permitted to use that as a...
It's an easement. It's a 13-foot easement there.
But if, do they have rights to that easement?
But I don't know.
Okay. That would have to be proven by the developer when they go to develop the property.
No one's ever confronted me with that, okay?
A 13-foot easement wouldn't be wide enough for an ingress or egress anyway.
That's it.
If something were approved out there, they'd have to go through site plan, approval of the county engineer to look at, and there's no way we're gonna let somebody build a business of any type and come across somebody else's property, so...
Thank you, sir.
I think we can assure you that, you know, a 13-foot easement isn't legal at fifty or seventy-five, then that might be an issue.
It's a little notch right there, Chairman, a little notch there, and that's where the road goes out to 231. It's real easy and convenient to just drive around that and go all the way out to 231, but it's a boundary line there, it's not, the easement's not adjacent to the, I mean, it's not running right along the property line. Now, it might be open for consideration if it's gonna benefit me to move it to the property line and make it 13-foot thoroughfare, but when you're talking about commercial, you know you're gonna have trucks, traffic in and out of there, and truck drivers, as I understand, most truck drivers, they just want to get to load haul and unload it and get back. So that's what I wish to address. Thank y'all for your attention.
Mike, you have any additional, do you have any additional information?
No, they wouldn't have permission to use somebody else's property without...
Can you turn off the subdivision layer?
I think he's talking about this gravel drive right here. I think this, this is Mr. Edgar's property, yeah. This is his property, and apparently there's an easement that runs along the back, or the south side of this property, and he's worried about people coming across here, and this little strip here is on the Davenport Benchmark property, but they wouldn't have permission to use this.
Oh, he's talking about accessing that, that parcel, whatever, right, that bigger parcel, so they're interested for it to come off 231.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But yeah, we wouldn't encourage any type of commercial business accessing off a side street like that.
No, sir. Not at all.
Anyone else?
Mike, I just want, oh, excuse me, on this same subject, I just, on their master plan here for Davenport Station, it does show a 42-foot ingress/egress easement that I'm assuming that this gentleman's talking about. Why would they include it on this master plan?
Rob, unless you have an answer for that?
I'll clarify on that, that this drawing has gone through so many iterations in the past 12 years, that there's a lot of fluff that's hiding in places at times. We are not gonna be utilizing that roadway. We will make every effort to make certain that his gravel driveway and his easements are respected in regards to whether it's Davenport Station as the residential portion or even Davenport Station in regards to the commercial side of things. Little housekeeping thing we just need to work through when we get into the site plan level, and Mike and Doug will review that when we go through the site plan level on these commercial elements and the residential side of things as well, that we will make certain that there are no means of which we can access that easement or even utilize that gravel roadway, whether, whoever it is that comes and develops this commercially on that side of things. So it's definitely, one of those things we'll definitely clean up when we get down to the bare bones of the actual site plans that come along with those, with those properties on that side. We definitely don't want to disturb his rights and his property on that side, so. Again, Rob Mulch and SEC in behalf of Benchmark Communities tonight. As Danielle alluded to, this is kind of more or less kind of wanting to help clarify what the commercial uses could be used on these parcels that have always been zoned, I should say, part of the PRD process and the originally approved plan back from 2007, that these are all commercial lots. And as Danielle stated, there was never anything included in the pattern book or inside the overall PUD or PRD back then as to what uses were permitted, and we're getting to that point now with development moving this area and the Davenport moving forward as a residential portion. We wanted to make certain we had some clarity for our ownership and those potential buyers that are coming down the road, that they have interests already coming up from, you know, potential buyers out there, but we didn't know what limitations we were, were not allowed to build on those lots. So in speaking with staff, this was the direction best to go, is go back and look at rezoning this to get us these uses more or less in a commercial standpoint, so that we know which clientele that comes through the door, whether they're actually feasible for these lots or not. So, you know, like I said, it was very vague back then, and we're wanting to have definitely more clarification, not only for us, but for you guys and also staff, so that as we bring projects forward, we all know that they're on the, on the right plane in regards to what can and can't be, you know, built on these commercial properties. And with that, I'm open for questions now or afterwards.
Question, let me ask Danielle first. Did you say that there's a parcel that is already zoned commercial? And is it commercial services? Is that what you said? Okay, that's what I thought.
Services, it's nine acres plus.
So is there a reason, then, why you would want to go from, why you'd want to skip commercial services and go straight to commercial general for these others? Have you given any thought to that?
It's just to get us the, there's five items inside this that are different between commercial services and commercial general. We just want to put all the one, all the parcels that are part of this Davenport portfolio together under one classification system, and, you know, doing the CN gives us the full range of opportunities for, you know, whoever may come through the door that wants to get on these properties. The CS zoning was put on there in 2012 or 2013 or something like that, when they came back and did an amendment back then. We just want to make certain we get, you know, pull it back all the way to the commercial side, the full range of spectrum of everything on those lots.
It's CN, but you're not, CN's not what you're asking for. You're asking for CG, correct?
Correct.
And so then are you asking to rezone the CS as part of that?
Correct. Yes.
There were several that I guess give me some concern for additional traffic. One of the things that would be permitted in the commercial general that wouldn't be in services are the transient accommodations, general retail over 5,000 square feet, construction sales and service. You're talking about large moving equipment coming in and out of there, I'd imagine. And then on special exception versus permitted, you've got food service, which I think probably people that far out might enjoy having, you know, so I don't think that one's necessarily a problem. But also under special exception, you can have community repair, and then community assembly. You're talking about possibly churches. You'd have special exception in the smaller, in the lower zoning, and permitted in the other one, that would be medium, and then for large, you could get it under special exception. So I guess just because traffic has been such a recurring theme around this particular parcel, I'm just concerned about skipping over, you know, what could be an appropriate commercial zoning for that, for those parcels that we'd already kind of planned for, instead of going a little too far and maybe permitting some things that, you know, are gonna cause more of a hardship on the people living out there. So that's just why I was asking what you were thinking about, why you were wanting to go for the commercial general instead of the commercial services.
And like I said, we're, you know, the, what I can tell from the differences in regards to what is and what isn't permitted between the two, there's like five items out of those. One of those, of course, is adult entertainment, which we would like to strike right from the get-go, and we would even indeed restrict that on that side, for that, for that element on that side. Automotive parking, which relates to parking garages or parking areas for like event-type venues and stuff like that. We'd also, you know, that one just wouldn't make any sense in the get-go on that side. You know, the other one was extensive impact facilities. That deals with landfills, airports, you know, big type things that, you know, definitely wouldn't fit the mold for these small, you know, acre, two-acre sized lots, except for, you know, in regards to a large area on that side. So, you know, there's just, you know, a handful of items in here that we would, you know, that is the difference really between going with the CS versus the CG. And, you know, there's two that are really, in particular, that we really want to make certain that we get in there, would be healthcare facilities. That one would give us, you know, the ability for like, you know, rehabilitation centers or, you know, observation centers, those kinds of things. Those are the kinds of lists of things that they allow for health services, healthcare facilities on these lots. So if you had like a small doctor's office or something like that, that one to come and open up in that category, the CN zone would allow us to have that use on that side. And also, you know, just, you know, the other one was vehicular craft-related equipment sales, so car dealerships, ATV dealerships, those kinds of things, those are the things that we really wanted to, you know, be able to make certain we had involved in this zoning classification that gave us the opportunity for, you know, those type of services that they did come along to provide those properties for that, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Carter Woodruff again. I think you just addressed one of my main concerns, Rob, which you were talking about, differences in the zoning part. You know, we've got churches in that area, I figured adult entertainment was out, but I'm a little bit concerned about the vehicular craft and related equipment sales. I don't know how extensive that is, how far that goes. I just, I'm, I'm not privy to that. I assume what he was saying is correct, but the aspect of traffic coming back out on that property can affect other landowners and other residents in that area. I know originally when they zoned this, and one time they were looking at a caboodle dealership in there, and they were talking about going up to the road that comes out in front of Rucker Road, it's red light part of it. I assume parcels on that end for sure could access that. Is there gonna be any other access in from that, from that road into any of this commercial that's on the front, especially down here on the, I guess, the far southern corner? That was a question I asked about, I wanted to ask about this. And then the other aspect, as well as I had with the, the last deal was draining, it's even more so on the front, there's pretty good grade difference from, from, down to my property, and, you know, when you're dealing with that much concrete or asphalt or whatever it will be, be, be a lot of drainage, and I don't know how it could get stopped coming down on me, but I guess I have to leave that up to you, Mike, to determine...
Watch that carefully.
...be done in it, but it's pretty much the whole length of that property, so those are my two main concerns.
Carter Woodruff, I'm trying to oppose this, but make sure we understand this. That 42-foot, you see there on that map, that was, had to be re-added to my property. When I bought it, I paid for 8.05 acres, okay? But I only got 7.43, so we had to go back and have it resurveyed by SEC or other, so they added that 43 feet there, but that little 13-foot driveway went back there to the city dump years ago, back there where you got the wilderness, okay? And a lot of people was putting gates up back there, you know, blocking it off, but I've not done that yet. But I had a lawsuit by the neighbor there, thought he could come across that line and use that 13-foot with the meta, meta cars out there when they were using the metavac. Well, he went and surveyed it all and put it on his property, so I had to go reclaim it. So that's the reason I'm standing here, okay? That's it, that's that extra added. It's real easy, I mean, it's real nice to have access, 'cause you just drive right there and go right out to the highway. And I probably wouldn't object if it didn't get to be, you know, if you let one person start, it's just gonna be one right behind the other, because we're gonna look at quite a bit of population increase out there. And so I'm not trying to oppose anybody, but I don't know what kind of, you know, industry or what the general services they're gonna, you know, I didn't see anything on my letter. I got what y'all know about general services, you know, like ATVs or tractors, you know, tractor repair or something like it. So I guess we'll be hearing that later, if, gotta come for y'all too, probably, for, okay, but if it gets approved for commercial, they can start, just go through, y'all might come through, the Commissioners do this.
Well, if, if the request to commercial general is approved, then their recommendation goes to the Board of Commissioners. The Commissioners will then vote on it. Once that's voted upon, if the developer chooses to develop the property under that zone...
That's right.
...they would just go through technical review.
Same way I can do.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Officer. Anyone else wishing to speak? Being no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Danielle, can you go back to one of the maps that shows the, I'm actually looking at a Davenport Station pattern book, is what I'm looking at. There, where that lot A is, there are two lots that are carved out that are just white, they're not part of this. So what's on those two lots? And what are they zoned?
That's the Empty Bottle site and the adjacent property. Empty Bottle, it's a drug establishment? Okay, a bar. Oh, in the south of...
That's not the map she was thinking about. There and there.
Yeah, those are the two parcels. That's the Empty Bottle, here, I believe.
So what is it zoned?
It's commercial services.
And what's the other one?
Daycare or something, maybe there or something, I forget.
Commercial services as well.
The place such as empty, is allowed on empty, uh, CS service?
Pardon me?
The beer joint allowed on a CS service?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. I would think that would take a higher classification personally.
Another tract is owned by Smotherman Properties. But I don't know the use, what, what's, they're using that.
Is it developed?
It's got a structure on it, but...
Mike, can you zoom out and just let us see more, a big picture of what the zoning is?
Across the street you have the Sunshine Auto Sales, and that's commercial general.
Where's the county rock quarry? Is it not right there? One thing that comes to me is, is it in the developer's best interest to put something there that's appeasing, because they've got to sell 400-plus houses. If they put something there that's not good, and anytime we can locate a business in the county, that's tax dollars going to the county instead of the city. And if you can stop some of those people from the south, they're heading to town to do their shopping or whatever business there, instead of going all the way into Murfreesboro, then that's that much less traffic going all the way into Murfreesboro.
As you stated, there's only a few differences, but those differences would be a car lot, our car parking, adult entertainment. Some of them would take special exemption, but still it would open up that possibility. A healthcare facility, which would cause traffic problems, and extensive impact facility. I don't know, this is a hard sale since it is a residential area that expires, expire that may not be so self-conscious of what goes in there. I think it just opens up for problems later.
There's still some things I still have issues with on the whole project, but it leans to the commercial side of it. I kind of agree with Commissioner P. I kind of lean more toward commercial services being the appropriate commercial zone for this area because of a lot of reasons, traffic being one to name a few, but it does open up to more, more things that have concerns. Commercial services is good. Everything I see on there would be very suitable for that area, if chosen to move forward. So I'm, I'm kind of leaning that direction right now.
There a motion in that?
Mr. Chair, not seeing much excitement out here on the floor. Again, I'm going to make a motion to deny the commercial general request.
Have a motion to deny. Somebody second.
Could we?
Thank you, Commissioner P.
Could we not make a motion to approve the commercial services? Instead, instead of, I mean, do we need?
I agree with that, and if that's appropriate, I, I, I'm good with that. I'm not sure their request was for commercial services, what, so is it appropriate to approve?
I think we can approve anything what they ask for or less. That's what we've always done in the past. We just couldn't decide to go to industrial or commercial highway or something, but long as we're downgrading, then in the past, we've always been, had the ability to do that, so...
Josh.
Let me make sure I understand the question. Is the question whether or not you can make an affirmative motion to go to commercial services as opposed to denying the, their request for commercial general? Is that the question?
In the past, we've always been able to approve anything of the zoning request and lesser. We couldn't go farther, because that would be blind sighing the neighbors, you know, asking for something more aggressive, or I guess we're on agreement, commercial services is less aggressive than commercial general, and so, so that's just an amendment, we, in my opinion, we've done that dozens of times, just.
Right.
Approve something a lesser notch down, basically.
I was just trying to make sure I understood what the, what the question was. I think you can make that motion. Obviously, I don't know what the applicant's ultimate position may be on that, if you approve it that way, but I think the motion can be to, I would probably phrase it by saying you're, you're denying the commercial general request and approving the commercial services request, because that commercial general component is part of the original request that came forward. So I think it'd be good to mention that in the motion, if that's the way you're going to go.
Chair, I'd like to revise my, oh, excuse me.
Have a compromise here.
Speaking of my clients, I think they're in agreement with you all in regards to what you're wanting to do tonight and denying the commercial general and move it to commercial services on that side. So we, you know, we are in agreement, if you guys are going to vote that direction, we would definitely take that vote. You're welcome.
Do we need two motions, Josh, or can we handle in one?
You could still do it in one. I think maybe, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Commissioner, I have water, but I think maybe you're going to amend that motion to go both ways.
I'd like to revise my motion to deny the commercial general request and instead approve a commercial services zoning classification, subject to all staff comments.
P, thank you. Any other questions, comments? We have a motion to deny and approve. I think. Does that sound right, Josh?
I think that works under these circumstances, yes.
All who's in favor of the motion to deny general and to approve services, please say aye. Any opposition? And motion carries. Thank you. Both of these rezoning requests are scheduled to come before the full county commission, and I believe that's the 15th of June at 6:00 PM, actually at 6:30 PM here in this courtroom. Item 6B zoning request for Stephen Grace, item number 17-A014. Location is 3752 Shelbyville Highway, Commission District is 6. County Commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately three acres. Tax map 136, parcel 43.00. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS, commercial services. Danielle.
Thank you. This is a request submitted by Stephen Grace. 17A014 is a request for residential medium density to commercial services zoning. And this is a result, this is a three-acre parcel, and this request is a result of code enforcement. A violation had occurred, some structures were brought in, portable structures were brought in onto the property. The applicant was under the impression that selling plant materials fell under the agricultural exemption. However, this was a retail outlet as opposed to wholesale agricultural sales. And so the site had been approved by the applicant with gravel, and if you can advance, you can see the structures that were placed on the site without permit. So the applicant came in and sought to remedy the issue and was informed that they would need to change the zoning in order to establish a plant nursery, retail plant nursery from the property. And if the request is approved, the applicant will have to undergo site plan review, which will require the submittal of engineered plans that will be reviewed to determine whether or not the development meets all of county standards. We have passed out a letter that was submitted to our office on Friday afternoon from a neighbor, Mr. Dickinson, who I believe is here tonight and will address his concerns, but I understand that there are two easements that are identified on the property. There is a plat that shows two driveways that access Mr. Dickinson's property from this particular site that fronts Shelbyville Pike. If there are any issues with easements, that would be studied and, and considered during the site plan review process. The site would be consistent, the change would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's along a four-lane divided highway. It's in a general urban area. The commercial services zone has been deemed appropriate along this section of Shelbyville Pike. And it, staff will say that it meets the development patterns in this area. That concludes our presentation.
Questions for staff? Is this a pre-existing business, or is this a new business? Does anyone know?
From what I understand, this is a new business. It was on residential medium. And also to address some additional concerns that the opposition has outlined to us. Their concern about turn lanes and traffic in this area and the speed of traffic along Shelbyville Pike on the segment.
Approved, will the applicant not have to, like, pave the parking and stuff and?
They will be subject, yes.
Buffers and all that kind of stuff?
Will be treated.
Or get substantial variances from the BZA? I mean, that, that's a pretty cost, because they've got, I'm not trying to be disparaging, but that's a pretty low cost so far. They put some portable buildings in, but you start paving and putting in retention, do they understand all that and still want to go here?
That has been explained to the applicant, I know, by myself and by Mr. Demossi.
They haven't started spending money yet, in my opinion, if they have to meet county standards, and I just want to make sure they're aware of that.
Right. We do inform people that when they plan to develop a vacant site as their non-residential use, they're subject to all of those requirements.
Open air market, that's what it's going to be, right? Open air market.
Questions that you'd like to hear from the applicant? Before we open the public hearing, I believe it'd be good if Mr. Grace would come forward and make a presentation or do some explaining or...
I can do some explaining, I'm not sure I have a presentation. I'm Steve Grace. John Clark as well is in the back of, in the pews. We purchased this property, and what we propose to do is to, to operate an open-air retail and some wholesale market. We're from Shelbyville. I've lived in Murfreesboro for 15 years, but I just recently bought a farm and moved to, Murfreesboro got too big for me, so I moved to Bedford County. And we have a farm, and we have greenhouses, and we have a retail lot over in Bedford County. And we, we sell hanging baskets, and we sell ferns, and we sell herbs, and we sell some produce that we grow at the farm. And, and that's what we would propose to do here. It would be an open-air market that would, we would, and we'll do whatever pavement-wise or buffering-wise, whatever the county wants us to do. Our intention is to be a good neighbor and to provide a product and a service that I think would be well-received in this area of the county. Now, let me explain, we did get here kind of crosswise, and I guess that's my fault. We purchased this, this lot, and I looked at the zoning, and I, and I read the zoning, and it's kind of confusing, but I thought that we could operate under the agricultural exemption and sell products that we grew and produced on the site. And codes told us that that was not correct, and so we stopped that. We, and we never operated, and we never opened. We did put some gravel on the lot, and we put up two portable garages. And I also had no idea you had to have a permit to do that. I've put up portable garages in other counties and have never done that. So, so whatever permitting we need to do, we will certainly do. We did not mean to come to the commission crosswise, but we are. So, but that's the idea that we would like to do, is to, is to sell hanging baskets, sell ferns, sell produce that we grow, both a little bit here, but mostly over in Bedford County. That said, I'm happy to answer any questions at all. And easement-wise, I'm not really sure what that means.
That's what I was going to ask. Have you had any conversations with Mr. Dickens?
I have not. Mr. Clark has. You want to come up, John? You, have you had conversations? Come up here. This is John Clark. I purchased the farm over in Bedford County from him, and we operate together now.
Yeah, I talked to him about being landlocked and offered him a 20-foot easement along the edge of the property to, to get in there.
My understanding is this, I think, are there two, don't leave, are there two means of ingress and egress on both sides of, of the property, the subject property?
Yeah, and, and I offered him an easement.
And I believe that there is not a true, don't leave, stay here. I believe that there's not, as I understand, a true, and we had the property surveyed out, I believe there's not a true easement that runs to support the other landowners. But there's been a gravel road on each side of our property that the other owners have accessed, and that's happened for some time. So I would expect, and we've looked at it briefly, I would expect that there is either an easement by prescription, because it's been there so long, or an easement of necessity, because I don't know that they have other means of ingress or egress, but we do not. We don't, we don't have any interest in trying to box out anybody from the adjoining property at all.
He's used the two in the past, and there are two that are there. What was your objection to letting him continue to use both as opposed to one? That seems to be his objection in the letter, is going...
Have we, I'm sorry, I need to catch you up.
No, so that just seems to be his objection in the letter, is going from using one drive to, from having been able to use two drives to going to one.
First of all, I've, have you, I've not seen a letter. And have you seen any letter?
I, uh, there, there's, as you can see, there's, there's drives on both sides. And his house fronts the one on, on the bottom, and then there's one up here. And the neighbor on, on the upper side doesn't like all the traffic that was coming from these two houses on the lower side coming through, and, and it's a matter of convenience, because you see there's a crossover on 231. So everybody wants to go up that driveway and use that crossover instead of going up. And it's just a matter of convenience, so I understand that. But the people on this end don't really like all that traffic. So I offered them a permanent easement in RD to use this lower end. And that's where I'm at.
First of all, it's not, but it's not our traffic, because we've never done any business there. It's just the traffic of whatever, it's already been there. And two, do you, do you have an objection to, I mean, there are two gravel roads there. Can they use either, as far as you?
Well, they're using either, but I'm just doing what the other neighbors asked me to do.
But they're both still there.
Both driveways are there. I don't know, I've not, I've not seen an objection.
Nor have I, and I'm not spoken with anyone.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Grace while he's up here?
Is your farm over in Bedford County? Is it on the Midland Road close to Shelbyville?
It is on the Midland Road.
Yeah, then you sold mums over there last year, right? Close, was it on this location here or just up 231? Did, did y'all sell mums out there last year?
Sold mums from our farm at, it's 2653 Midland Road, which is...
Okay, didn't you, one year, didn't you sell on 231 somewhere close to this piece of property? There was a house up there, a vacant house. Okay, you might not have been involved with that. Close, close to this piece of property once, yeah? Yeah, okay. Tore down, tore down an old house that was there, right? Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's the piece of property. Yeah.
We've also sold mums for years from the farm, and we have currently an open-air lot on Highway 231 in Shelbyville, close to the farm. Your mom, we are not responsible if your mom died. I apologize.
Any other questions for Mr. Grace? Any other questions for Mr. Grace? Thank you, Mr. Grace.
Thank you.
This time, I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. And while you're coming up, I'll remind you to stay on point and make your comments as brief as possible. So if you would...
Thank you. My name's Robert Dickinson. I have no problems with the gentleman having the nursery out there. We've been living there for 12 years. We've, we are the only ones that utilize mostly that drive that he has opposition to us using besides his nephew. His nephew has 10, 12 cars down there, six, eight kids. We only have two that go down there. Out of the 12 years, there's never been a problem until his uncle bought this property. My main concern is the safety of the children. There's, there's only one way, as you can see on that map, where you exit the 3732 Shelbyville Pike where there's a crossover to go northbound on 231. Our mailbox happens to be south of that, so that is our entrance. But the main thing is the safety of the kids. There's no egress. I come home at 11 o'clock at night and I still almost get run over trying to turn into either one of the driveways. That's not even during heavy traffic time. And as you've all talked about tonight, you know how 231 is. No deceleration lanes. There's only one access point going into 3752 Shelbyville Pike, which they have purchased. And they have put gravel across to the both of them. But as it sits now, the only other way to leave our place is to go southbound crossover at the county land, landfill. And as you know, in the mornings, if you're not doing, there's people coming over there 90 miles an hour across the top of that hill. But my main concern is the safety of the children, the turn lanes and the speed. Every so often, there's a state police officer out there. If the county puts some police officers out there, the revenue from the citations would be astronomical and you could just about do whatever you want to do in the county. But it's very, very dangerous there. And that's, that's my point. And I would just like to be able to utilize, as I said before, we've lived there over 12 years. There's never been a problem with us using that egress to cross over the highway until the uncle purchased the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I just want to make sure I understand legal ownership. And I agreed with the comment in your letter. We typically would not have issued a building permit unless you had some road frontage. So do we, what parcel, is it, is it the driveway that, Mike, you might know, it looks like you're scanning for it. Is it the driveway that's going in to the two houses? Does he already have an easement to that, to access his property?
We would have to look at the deeds.
There's only one access right there in the middle where he's got the metal shed right above the hand. That's my house where you've got the mouse, right back there. Okay? Then on my paper... 3766. On our property, when we bought our house and refinanced it, we had to go through all the legal things to make sure we weren't landlocked. And I was told by one of the gentlemen there that I was landlocked and I was going to be landlocked.
This is his plot then for his property?
That's mine. The 2.01. This is, that's mine. His is just to your right, to the, to the east. But the only crossover, as you see, is north. And see, it doesn't even show it there on that.
So Mike, you're not finding an existing legal easement?
Not without going through all the deeds.
And, and he has brought the deeds to us? But we would verify that during the site plan review.
Does everybody use that crossover? Does everybody go out the backside and go around?
That is correct. That is the safest way any time of the day to go across there. And I have even taken money out of my pocket to put gravel there to make it safer, no potholes or anything like that. And there's never been a problem or an issue with, we have too much traffic until the family bought into it.
So on that gravel drive there, it looks like it splits the property, I mean, without surveying it and no...
I've, I've submitted to the planning, everything that we dug up from where they, where we tried to refinance and they dug and did everything to make sure we weren't landlocked. And they said that legally, our access was going from where the three cars are on that previous slide, north, and taking a right to the access crossover. That was what was keeping us from being landlocked so we could build our house. That's the one he really does not want us to use. And by the way, there's no way for even two cars to pass on either one of those roads without running...
Do I have an easement for that southern access, that one right there?
No, sir. Not, not that I know of. Our easement by paperwork was on the northern side.
But it doesn't call it out as an easement. So I'd have to look at the deeds to see.
But again, thank you. If anybody has any questions. My main concern is the safety. And there was someone just killed two blocks down the road at Walmart there this morning at 9:30, which is going to back up towards the other gentleman's development. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Go back to that...
Overall area? This one?
Yeah. The, if you'll notice, the red line is the survey line. And they're talking about we only have one access. Both those accesses, both driveways belong on this tract of land. You'll notice both those driveways are on the 3752 tract of land.
Well, this GIS property lines are not as accurate as a field-run survey, so I can't say for certain that they're...
The field-run survey was just completed by CAFI surveying and it's accurate.
Okay, well...
I submitted it with the application. It was just completed about three weeks ago with the application. I submitted it, the survey. Thank you.
Well, it looks like it meanders, you know, in and out. It, it looks similar to the aerial image, starting off-site and then going on and then following the route around.
Regardless of what we do here tonight, the driveway issue is a whole separate thing. And we're talking about whether it's appropriate to use this for this open-air market. And this driveway issue is almost out of our purview, I would think. And on a side note, this is a good reason we need to be very cautious when we look at development of private business.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Senator, nobody said they were against an open-air market. And the applicant did say they were willing to bring everything up to county standards and all. Then, and I don't know how we tie anything to zoning into this driveway issue. I don't think that's where we need to go. I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
I have a motion to approve. And a second. Other discussions?
Mr. Chair, if I'm, just may get a refresher, we've been off on another topic for a little while here. Exactly what we, are we voting to approve? Some sort of commercial zoning here?
Commercial services?
Commercial services. Now, if this, that allows the opportunity, though, for this piece of property to change in the future to some other type of use than a relatively low-impact plant-type business. Daniel, could you fill me in on some of those possible uses that, future uses under that CS zoning?
Well, there's the same uses that you were discussing on the previous case. It allows general retail. It allows restaurants. It allows a myriad transient accommodations. I mean, it's a small site. It's, it's three acres. So it's going to be limited into what it can be developed as. But it's, it's any of those uses that you would see, it wouldn't be as intensive. It wouldn't allow, you know, car sales, exterior displays of car sales or equipment sales. But pretty much you'd see all of the other commercial uses that you find throughout the county in commercial zones.
Last several months, commercial versus a PUD, would this be an appropriate PUD request?
Oh, I would not think, I would not think so. And I do not think that Doug would think so either. I believe that it's consistent with the development patterns that you're finding along Shelbyville Pike. It's not tucked away in a residential area off a local road or collector road. This is a four-lane divided arterial highway.
Hey, Mike, is that CS property the motorcycle shop on the other side of the 231 northbound side?
I have a motion and a second to approve item 17-A014. Other questions?
One question. Before this comes back for site plan, these two neighbors have this driveway issue hashed out. Before you look at site plan, you've got to have some decision on this driveway thing, right?
Absolutely. I do believe that whenever we do get a submission, that we would consider the aerial when we review the plans. Also, we're, we've already been apprised the situation. We've been provided with some deeds. Now, I'm not qualified to read it to determine whether or not that's legitimate access. It is a civil issue, the easement issue, but obviously we'll take into consideration.
Might have to talk to Josh about this one, about that.
Josh, the question was, would it be appropriate to have the driveway issue resolved before we saw a site plan?
I think that the driveway issue is going to, will come to a head when they start to develop the site plan because whoever goes out there to work on the site plan is going to have to figure out whether or not the property is subjected to an easement. So the issue will surface at that point, I would, I would think. I know it's difficult, if not impossible, to figure out an easement dispute like this, looking at these maps on the wall. Somebody's going to have to dig in and look at the actual deeds, see if there's been an actual easement granted. If there is an easement granted, then he's got an easement. He's either got one or he doesn't. And it'll be reflected in those underlying documents. So it can be determined, and I think it'll be determined during that site plan process. It should be. There still could be a dispute. There's a lot of easement disputes that go on out there in the world. So they could still have a difference of opinion about what the easement allows for. For example, sometimes there's disputes about that. Is it ingress and egress only? Is it for just them or others and so forth? But anyway, that's a long answer to a short question. I think that issue will surface in a way that it can be addressed between now and you actually seeing the site plan. I would expect it to be addressed by that time.
Mike, can you pull up on the PC agenda that we have? It's 35 pages. Page 32 of 35. Looks like it's sort of the hand-sketched site plan submitted by the applicant. And it looks like, I don't know, we don't have the entire picture on this document, so I don't know who did the survey, but it looks, it looks like that's what it's come from. And it shows to the north, a 10-foot ingress, egress easement on the outside, not on the applicant's property, but on the outside of that. And then to the south, it's got the 12-foot ingress, egress easement. The problem is the easements are there. They're just not where the driveways are. And it doesn't even look like, based on how this is mapped out, that they're even part of the applicant's property. Did you, were you able to get to that, the PC agenda?
It's not loaded on, on this, what I have.
It's what you saw. It's a 10-foot...
There's a, the property to the north has a 10-foot easement on it that allows ingress and egress to the property behind it. The property to the south has that 15-foot easement on it that allows ingress and egress to the property just to the south of Mr. Dickerson's property, but not to his property. But there's no, but they are not on the property we're talking about. I've done all that work. I know where they're at. Yeah. But there's no, there's no ingress or egress. There's no easements on the property that, that were, that belongs to us. No. Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. But we will, we'll make an exception. Come on up.
Like I said, my main concern is the safety. And if they're taking consideration, slow-down lane, egress, whatever, that's my main concern. There are children out there catching the buses in the morning and in the evening. Safety's my main concern. Thank you.
Commissioners?
Here again, I want to express my concern over a commercial services zoning. And I understand that there's a piece of property across the street that zoning, zone commercial services. But you don't see houses right up against the property line adjoining that CS zoning. Whereas this property they're asking for has, what, five homes that are very close to the property line. As it's submitted, I, what his plan shows now, I don't have a concern with it. I think it fits in there well. But two or three years down the road, if somebody comes in there and wants to put in something much higher impact that's going to go all, essentially clear this lot and put up a little landscaping buffer around the perimeter, I think you're, the noise and whatnot is right on top of these people's homes. And I'm just, I'm just a little uncomfortable with that.
Questions? Other comments?
Mike, when you were zooming out and looking at the different zoning layers, besides that one, commercial services, where's the next closest commercial area?
That's what I was looking at. The city of Murfreesboro has, whoops. Has some, this is the Walmart at the corner of J. B. Jackson, planned commercial development. And then the Tiger Hill, I think this is called Tiger Hill right here. This is commercial highway around it. And then the commercial highway on this side over here for, in the city of Murfreesboro. In the county, I think we'd have to go back down to Davenport Station. The motorcycle shop up here, this commercial services. And then down here, this commercial general.
Think back 10 years ago, how far commercial development was out that way. It was probably back there close to Barfield Road or something. And I mean, it's, it's coming out that way. Like Daniel said, it's a four-lane state highway. You know, this is, I don't think anybody else is going to be building any more residential houses down there. They're going to be selling those... going to be selling those houses. They're going to be torn down at some point in time. So personally, I don't, you know, it's not a real aggressive zoning. It's the same exact zoning we just gave at Davenport Station, so. I don't, if they're going to bring it, and I still will be surprised if they actually are willing to spend the money to bring it up to full county standards as far as detention and buffering and all that, but that's a hurdle they're going to have to cross, you know.
Motion and a second to approve. Other questions? Other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve item 17-A014 for Stephen Grace. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Opposition?
No.
Call the roll, please, Miguel.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
No.
Lee Vogel.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Will Jordan.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
No.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
No.
Four noes and six yeses.
Motion to approve carries. This will also go before the full county commission on Thursday night, June 15, 6:30 PM, right here in this courtroom. Item 6B is also scheduled for a public hearing. It's a proposed zoning amendment, Section 1101B, fences, walls, and hedges. We talked a little bit about this, and I think Danielle has got all the scoop for us. Danielle?
I understand that Doug spoke to you at your day meeting regarding the potential for this change and that you guys were amenable to it. At the meeting, he presented to you this graphic that you see on the screen now that shows you the dilemma that we experience in applying our current code for fences. We limit the fence height between the principal building and the right-of-way to four feet. However, if you have three lots side by side, and we've encountered, we've had a situation that has illustrated to us where our deficiencies are in the code. And it depends on who erects the fence first is, is really what we base a violation determination on or compliance determination on, and that's what this graphic explains. So if you see the first graphic, you'll see that all of the lots are compliant. If each of the lot owners erect their own fences and they don't extend, say it's a six-foot height fence, and they don't extend past the front of the house, then it would be compliant. If Lot B, which is in the middle, extends a fence, but he erects it, it's a six-foot height fence, and he does not extend past his neighboring homes, however, extends past his home, he's in violation. However, if Lot A and Lot C erects the fences that extend to the front of their structure and at six feet in height, it's compliant. And I probably made it very confusing, but the graphic's pretty clear. And after speaking with you at the day meeting, Doug indicated that he would make the change to the zoning ordinance and present the language to you. And it's simple. He just eliminates the language that limits the fence height between the front of the principal building to the right-of-way that limits it to four feet. So that's just eliminated altogether. And he also is proposing to eliminate that language in commercial and industrial districts. So there would be a limit of eight feet in residential districts and 15 feet in height in commercial and industrial districts. There would be no four-foot limitation between the principal structure and the right-of-way. And that is the proposal. However, in the Section 9 of Section 1101B that you see, he's added language that if a fence that's being proposed obstructs the vision triangle, which is defined in our definitions, then it would not be permitted. So it ensures the safety of vehicles leaving or entering the site, but it eliminates the potential for conflicts between neighbors or someone being noticed for violation when in fact, if the reverse situation occurred, he would not be in violation. And that concludes...
Thank you.
I apologize. I'm not Doug.
So let me get this straight. If a neighbor, neighbor can, a neighbor can build anything they want, and they're only not in compliant unless somebody complains. Is that pretty much right? Okay.
Well, I mean, the homes have to be placed in a manner, too. If they're all aligned, then we have no problems, so. Oh, I'm sorry. That's why we have pictures.
David, are you going to clear this up for us?
I don't believe I've ever cleared a fence problem up. And I understand the side fences, but I can't understand what you just said. You're telling me that we can put an eight-foot fence in front of a house that's in a PUD that we just approved to put so much percentage of brick and make it look nice, and they can put an eight-foot fence up in front of the house?
Well, regardless of the zoning, it could be RM. Unless there are homeowners' covenants and restrictions, it would permit, provided that it not blocked the vision triangle and obstructs that, yes, an eight-foot fence would be allowed along the front of the property.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the side six-foot extending past the front of the house in cases that you have different setbacks and things, and that'll solve that problem. But I am against anything in front of the house except four feet.
Well, hold on. I'm, the diagrams state that in front, it shall not exceed four feet.
That's our current regulation now.
So where does it say in the change that the face is going to be above eight feet?
Where, it's the language that we are eliminating that limits the height of the fence between the principal building and the right-of-way to four feet.
Okay, so in paragraph one, where you've double-lined that, you have removed that four-foot restriction.
That is correct.
Where does it, so you're, you've got the blanket statement, then. Okay. I'm unclear. So it, that, where does it reference, then, that side, rear, and front can be eight feet? Where does it say that the front face can be eight feet?
Fire language, the street, no, shall not extend past the front of the principal building, between the principal building and the street right-of-way, no fence or wall shall exceed four feet in height. So there's no limit to the height of the fence along the right-of-way. There would be, there is no height. The only thing that would prevent someone from erecting a fence that measured eight feet in height would if, would be if it violated the vision triangle.
Did we, I'm asking the group, did we talk about, I mean, I remember talking about this, talk about eliminating the four foot and going eight foot last time?
I think along the street right-of-way, it needs to remain, that adjacent to right-of-way remain four feet. And that way, if their fence runs the property line between two dwellings, then it would go, have the opportunity to go all the way to the right-of-way, but then reduce to four feet running adjacent to right-of-way. I think that's the language that needs to go back in, is where it's, it's stricken through that says between the principal building and the street right-of-way, it needs to be the street right-of-way shall not exceed four feet.
Ms. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We defer this until we can get it in our morning meeting where we can all be on the same page, and then we can bring it back here for a open, we have to have a public forum on this, I suppose, but we all be on the same page before we get here. Make a motion. We defer.
We have a motion to defer. Main concern was the size of the fence in the front of the residential structure, okay? So have staff look at that and bring back an alternative to us at our day meeting so that we can discuss it and then bring it forward at our next 6:00 meeting. Okay, with everyone, we have a motion to defer and a second. All those in favor of that motion to defer, please say aye. Any opposition? That motion to defer carries. Anything else, staff?
No.
Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 22. That will be a 9:00 AM meeting at the, in the planning mess. Anything else? Thank you for your attendance and your participation. We're adjourned.